Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of May 7, 2020. Since this is a virtual meeting, if you are providing testimony this evening, please speak clearly into the computer's microphone. Also, just making you all aware, all virtual testimony needs to be pertinent to the case at hand tonight. Before we begin, we need to approve the meeting minutes of the past meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I motion that the meeting, the WebEx Virtual Meeting of the Howard County Planning Board's April 23, 2020 meeting be adopted as the board minutes.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So minutes are approved. We have one item this evening, which is the continuation of the general plan update guidelines. Lisa will verify the speakers for this item and make sure that each person can be heard by the board. Each individual will have three minutes to give testimony, which will be testimony only, no questions. And please be sure to speak clearly into your computer's microphone. We will begin with the staff presentation.
Good evening, members of the planning board. For the record, this is Amy Gallin with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And we're here tonight to present the guidelines for our general plan update. And with me this evening is our consultant, Matt Nooncaster from City Explain. They assisted us in drafting these guidelines. We tried to incorporate the feedback that you provided at the workshop to the best we could. So we hope that you saw some of that in there as you reviewed them. And I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Matt to start the presentation.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, let me...
Are you good, Matt? Here, let me... Do you need to share your screen?
Yes, I do. Yes.
Change role too. Bear with me one second, I'm changing it now.
No, you're fine.
Just FYI, I'm about five miles away from mouth of Wilson.
Oh, very good.
Right now. Alright, here we go. I think it'll take now. Presenter.
Okay.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen.
Yes, let me... When you all can see a cover slide.
Looks great.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll go ahead and get started. Again, for the record, my name is Matt Nooncaster and I'm the owner and founding principal of City Explain Incorporated. We are the lead consultant for this project. We have a very deep bench of talented folks who are going to be working with us as an extension of DPZ staff. We introduced some of those folks last time, so I won't do it again this time. And really focus tonight's discussion on the deliverable that was born out of our workshop that we had in April, as well as some other research and things that we were able to do. And we bring forward to you today the draft general plan guidelines for review and comment, and then a recommendation at the end. So with that, I'll just go through a couple of slides. I'm not going to read the document to you. I know you all are all well versed in it, but I do want to highlight a few different things in there just to show kind of how we connected the dots and brought the pieces together. So first and foremost, just for this evening, to use our time wisely, I'm just going to go through some very light legal background, but we wanted to respond to one of your specific requests for more information. And so we'll do that in this section. Give you some quick highlights of some of the big things that are in the document itself, knowing that we can have more discussion later on. And then again, give you time, obviously, for you all to have your discussion and then make a recommendation to county council. So with that, and looking at some of the background and context, you know, first and foremost, remember the reason we're here is because there is a requirement in the county code that says that before a general plan update starts in earnest, we have to first have some general guidelines that provide a framework and some directions so that we all are on the same page moving forward. And there's some good expectations that are actually written down for plan participants to refer back to throughout the process. And so again, in the requirement itself, it's telling us that planning board actually prepares the general guidelines. They will be used by DPZ and because of that, the consultant team is an extension of DPZ as we prepare the plan. Ultimately, your recommendation this evening needs to go to county council so that they can adopt. And then we can start really moving forward in earnest with the plan update. So we didn't just start from scratch. You know, obviously, there was a lot of stuff already there. We, you know, obviously have had a couple of curveballs come our way, so to speak, with the pandemic and other things. But there was a lot of good information already out there and we were able to already make some early connections with folks. And so your staff had provided to us over 75 different plans and studies and ordinances and things that either have some relationship to the general plan or we just need to know about it because it was affecting kind of what people were thinking about in terms of growth and development in the county. There was some stakeholder engagement that we were able to do. And so we met with the county department directors onsite for a meeting and were able to engage them and had some early conversations about the needs of the planning process. We had our workshop with you in April. There's been some ongoing discussions going all the way back to kind of the origins of the EOI and the request for a consultant to even come on board. There were conversations being had and we were able to do some interviews with the county executive as well as county council members. And probably most important is just to acknowledge as well that there's been a lot of good work done with the zoning regulation assessments, assessment that was done by Clarion Associates. And there was all kinds of information there that we were able to pull from. And we thought it was great to have that just kind of really robust and deep collection of comments and things that were going on. And so we were able to refer to that as well. Now, one of the sort of larger items that we were asked to bring back to you for this meeting was trying to put in context how the general plan influences the other things that you do as a planning board, whether it's different documents, policies, ordinances, actions you need to take, processes you need to follow, recommendations you make. What I'd like to do is ask Amy to join me because obviously, local expertise is much appreciated in this context. But we want to go over for you a little bit about how this general plan and update and a general plan in general, no pun intended, is really affecting all these other things that you're doing and where they kind of get their impetus from. So Amy, do you mind joining me to go over this one?
Sure. So as Matt mentioned, this slide was put together as a specific request from the planning board. I believe the ask was, can we have a flow chart that helps piece this all together for us? How does, how do all of our decisions fit into this major decision that we'll be making on the general plan? So we spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to display this, depict it visually. And so this is what we've really come up with at this point. And what we tried to show here is all the different pieces that connect to and join to the general plan and what the planning board's role is in each of those pieces. We weren't sure whether or not you would want this to be part of the guidelines or just for your own information. So we're including it here and we'll, you know, during your work session, maybe you can determine whether or not you want this to be in the final set of guidelines. But basically, as you can see over to the left, we're at the general plan stage. And the planning board's role is to review the, to the general plan and to review the guidelines that will inform the general plan and make a recommendation to the county council. Same with any amendments of the general plan that may come up along the way in between general plan cycles. Probably one of the first prongs off of this is the capital budget, which you just heard recently. And in that, in that sense, the capital budget, the planning board is making a recommendation to the county executive on the annual capital program and any new or change projects. And the planning board is looking at it from how its relationship to the general plan and the impacts that capital budget has on growth, the growth of the county. And so, and then if you, if you kind of look downward, you'll see the functional plan and master plan arm. So we have some functional plans like Walk Howard and Bike Howard. I believe you heard Bike Howard earlier this year as well. And master plans like the downtown Columbia master plan. And then we're soon going to have an Eloquent City Master Plan. So those plans take a deeper dive into specific issues and they refine the policies and recommendations of the general plan. Again, the planning board's role in these is advisory to the council to review it for consistency with the general plan. So then when we get into regulations and kind of the way we've depicted it here is you have like two branches of regulations. You have the land development regulations and the zoning regulations. The zoning regulations are immediately formed by the general plan. Well, there's a future land use map that will be part of the general plan. And that's really going to set the stage for the update of the zoning regulations. We'll do a comprehensive rezoning after we adopt the general plan to make sure that our zoning regs comply with the new general plan. And then along the way, as you know, there's oftentimes zoning regulation, text amendments that come before you and then zoning map amendments when individual property owner wants to change the zoning of their property. Those come before you as well. Within the zoning context, all of those like blue bubbles that you see, the planning board's role is advisory and they recommend to the council, you know, approval or not. The other kind of leg of the regulations is the subdivision regulations, which of course are going to be informed and influenced by the general plan. Updates or the adoption of the subdivision regs and any subsequent updates to them, there isn't really a formal role for the planning board, but there are times where council, this is usually done through a council bill. And there are times where council may send them to the planning board for advisory comment. An example of this would be with the scenic roads legislation that we recently, that was recently adopted and when the planning board went before the council to provide advice on that. But otherwise, there isn't a formal role. However, for development plans, those are influenced by both the subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations. Council, sorry, the planning board does have a formal role and it's a decision-making role, oftentimes quasi-judicial, sometimes administrative decision-making on individual development plans. So in a nutshell, this is how the general plan influences all these other decisions and actions that are before you in your, in your, you know, in your regular deliberations. So you, do you want to, you want to continue with that and then we can take questions at the end? You want to continue, Matt? And then we can maybe take questions at the end.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to do that. Yeah, thank you. Alright. So moving out of kind of background and context, we want to just give some very high-level comments about the document. Again, we don't want to read it to you, but we want to just let you know kind of some of the methods of the madness and why we did some things and what we had heard and that kind of good stuff. So first and foremost, we stop on kind of page 12 and 11 of the document. And in there, we talk about what the general plan is, what it is not, how it nests within all those other plans that we mentioned the county has and enforces and you all have a role helping to enforce. And probably most importantly, if you look on the right-hand side of the page, we also tried to provide context for what creates change in a community. And while local government is very important, it is not the only thing that is causing change to occur. And so these things all need to align together in terms of the right market, the right demographics, development interest to do those things, whether it's to develop or even to conserve. Can you get lending and those kind of things? And so as we have our minds trying to think about the future of Howard County, we're going to try to think of it not just in what Howard County government does, but what are these other factors at play that you may be able to leverage or that you may need to consider and even try to change the trajectory to get the things that the government wants? It's not there to shape all of these different forces and things, but we're acknowledging what they are so that we have an open mind during the planning process. I remember at least one or more of you really said you liked flow charts and the processes and seeing how things fit together. And so we thought it was important to just put on one page the method to our madness, right? And so we've got a lot of stuff going on. Hopefully by now, you appreciate that we're also going to be kind of opportunistic. We'd be naive to think we know everything that's going to happen between now and the end of the planning process. And so we want to be ready to be able to take advantage of things that present themselves. But generally speaking, we have five phases to our planning process. And each of the orange boxes that are in the document are the main target or deliverable of that section. And then everything in blue that's swarming around it are kind of how we're going to get from beginning to end and all the little interim steps that go along with it. And so you see here, we have a process that flows from left to right. And I'll kind of jump into those just a little bit into each one. Again, not going into the detail that's in the document. But first, we had phase one, which is kind of our discovery phase. And if we do slow down and look at the flow diagram on the right for just a minute, for those of you who like to accomplish, you know, kind of celebrate accomplishments and success, we've done a lot of this already, right? So we're moving forward. We exchanged data. The consultant team has been onsite working with DPZ and kind of got a lay of the land. We're working on those general guidelines right now. We have a project logo. We're working on a branding strategy that goes with that. But a lot of phase one is in the rearview mirror and we're really happy about that. Things seem to be going really well. We've also been able to build our relationship with DPZ staff and others and we're real excited because of that. Again, we do acknowledge that there are a lot of plans and things already out there. It's not our job to have blinders on and ignore kind of what's going on. So we have been reviewing those as well and seeing how everything fits together. And then we moved, are moving into phase two. And phase two is all about just trying to organize all the information that we get. So we're going to collect data, we're going to be doing some listening and things. And ultimately, we're trying to find some important planning themes in this phase that will help guide the rest of our work. And as a general plan, as a general guidelines document, we're not trying to be too specific at this point in time. There's way too much invested by the county in terms of a great engagement process that we need to do some listening, collaborating and working together. So we purposely kept the planning themes, the general areas of interest very vague at this point. And we assume that they will fine tune and come into focus as the planning process unfolds. We are really excited about phase three or planning cycle three in the process because it's called our scenario planning task. And we had a little bit of discussion about it last time, so I wouldn't go into too much detail. But remember, this is going to force us to look at two or more different alternative futures for the county. And whether that's because there are two different ways to grow or we're trying to fine tune one way, this scenario planning is going to allow a process to provide information back to the stakeholders so that we can make more informed decisions. Generally speaking, it plugs in with our data collection and kind of where we are now. We'll be working with DPZ staff because they are going to be the ones actually doing the modeling. The consultant is the advisor in this role. So we'll be talking about how we create tools and things. We'll figure out where we're going right now with your current plan, which then allows us to kind of think through some things that we interlead with an engagement process. And that's kind of the scenario planning in a nutshell. But also in the document on the following page is a much more in-depth kind of walk through the steps of a scenario planning process that we can refer back to as we go through the, through the general plan update. Planning cycle four is where we start to put pen to paper and start to look at how these things relate to each other. It's also maybe where controversy starts to emerge, right? Because now we're starting to take everything that comes in. We're starting to look at trade-offs and consequences and opportunities. But this is where things like the future land use map start to get, take shape. Policies and the vision and stuff get captured. And this is also the opportunity where, while we're always planning for the county as a whole for the general plan update, we do have this new town framework that's embedded in the, in the scope of services where we are going to look in more detail in the Columbia area, minus downtown, but the villages and the area around it. And we're going to be able to apply some of these ideas with pen and paper, lock and building to see if it really makes sense what we're trying to do in real life places so that we really make sure that this can happen. And then this information will be there for whatever happens during implementation, whether it's during the conference of resuming or whatever else comes on. This kind of more specific detail will provide some information to those follow-up activities as well. It will be done onsite and it will be done in a transparent fashion so that the public is welcome to join in, sit down at the table with us, brainstorm ideas, watch us draw and react to those things. So it really is meant to be a task that is completed in Columbia, in the area. And then we get to phase five of the process, which is to just capture everything, memorialize the planning process, the recommendations and those kind of things and create a user-friendly document that will help you all at the dais or the other departments and the public and everybody who need to refer to this moving forward. We did have a discussion, remember, in our April workshop about this idea about having a very rigid playbook you have to follow, I mean, blueprint you have to follow versus more of a playbook approach where we flag things that are specifically sacred and should not change. We also acknowledge that there are some things that might be available if opportunities arise. And a great example I was thinking about as we were preparing for this evening was another community I worked in wanted to do some redevelopment in a site that was perfect to redevelop. But they had set very rigid level of service standards for the roads. And it turned out that they could not meet their own road standards because of the redevelopment that was occurring. Even if it was going to more of a transit-oriented approach, they had a level of service requirement that was still more auto-oriented and they couldn't meet it. So it was kind of boxing themselves in, even though it was checking so many other boxes of things that the plan was trying to achieve. That's kind of a demonstration of maybe how the playbook works so that it acknowledges that there might be some trade-offs or even some conflicts where we have to prioritize things in the plan. That kind of stuff will all be done in a playbook approach. All the data and information and processes going on are important, but probably equally important or even more important is our commitment to public engagement. Now, obviously, with the COVID-19 phenomenon going on, you know, it's going to be a different world than what we thought when we did the original contract, right? Just so you know, everything we talk about, we're obviously going to follow the county's role and lead and following the state's rules and guidelines for shelter in place and those kind of things as well. But really, the great news that we have is we already had designed just to maximize our outreach and our impact. We had our in-person events and activities already planned to be mirrored by an online or virtual environment as well to extend all of our activities. So that's there. But however, the people who may not be as comfortable in the virtual environment and things, that's where we need to keep reminding ourselves, how are we going to keep some of those underrepresented populations in the planning process we talked about at the workshop? How are we going to get out to those folks? And frankly, we're just going to kind of evolve as we go and try to do what we can, acknowledging that we're in an uncertain time. And so everything in the general guidelines, we think are still the right approach. It might come down to a timing issue, but we also are eyes wide open that we might need to actually call an audible on how we're doing some of this stuff to get this information we need to make good decisions. And that "we" is all of us. What I did want to stop though, and what I liked in the document to point out to you though is, as a general guidelines document, we wanted to start by just saying, what is it that people want when they want to be engaged, right? And that's how we're going to measure sort of these ideas, even if we have to change our approach and things. So we think people want to be asked to participate. They want to provide them a lot of different ways to participate. You see item number three, that safe, convenient places to gather. That's all, you know, that's where we have our COVID-19 hat on, just kind of thinking through all of that and how do we do that so that nobody feels at risk or in danger of participating in the planning process? How do we keep that meaningful in terms of our connections? And how do we make sure that we show them what they're doing is affecting change? And so we think from a general guidelines document, this is really the greatest tenants to start with in terms of a process. When we start to kind of put meat on the bones and think about all the different ways we can do those things, you see we have a very long list of outreach and engagement strategies and tools and activities we're thinking about. As I mentioned, the things you see from the four buckets in our last discussion about how are we going to educate ourselves or provide information to the plan participants? How are we going to inform each other? How we collaborate and how we get feedback on things we're producing are all still there. And if you start to look at these things, I go back to what I said earlier. A lot of these things that are in person or are more tactile or eyeball to eyeball already had an online component as well or a virtual component as well. And so we're just going to go through the process and decide which one needs to be emphasized given the current conditions that we're in. And recognizing those conditions will be changing as we go through a process that goes all the way till the end of 2021. So we're there and we've got all of those and we're happy to talk about any of those in more detail during the discussion. In terms of our approach to the document itself, remember that we talked about an organizational framework last time with four big ideas or statements? It was areas to preserve in the county, areas to enhance in the county, areas to transform and areas to strengthen. And right now, you see the way those are written are kind of more from a physical design standpoint. But it's very appropriate and may come out of the planning process that things to preserve may be things that are kind of intangibles and those kind of things. And I'll give you an example. We're working in a community now where they say they want to keep small town charm and character, but they're already at 50,000 people and they're, you know, they could grow as much as they wanted to. The market would give them as much as they need to. So instead, we said, well, what is it that makes, what is the DNA of a small town? And how do we keep that while, if and while you continue to grow? Those are the kind of things that can fit into one of these four buckets as we start to think about our planning process as well as the resulting document. And then I end here where I talk about, and we talked last time, that you have a deep history of plans and things that you've done before. But this is the first plan where we think we're going to really lead with character. Remember, we talked about how we thought character was more important to get right first? And then things like land use and infrastructure and other policies need to reinforce those character statements. So this plan will be doing that and it's kind of one of those first things that your plan will be doing. And then we also agreed to make the statement for the guidelines that instead of having side-load chapters, we're going to look for chapters that mix all the different remedies and needs to solve a common goal that's been, that will be stated in the plan. And so for this document here, we're just acknowledging that, that that's a preferred approach for trying to write the document. We can answer any other questions you have on the document. But otherwise, when we get to the discussion and listening to the comments, DPZ does have the recommendation for you that they would like you to consider. I'll just read it quickly almost to get it in the record. And the recommendation is that the planning board recommend the county council adopt these general plan guidelines that are presented to you today. So with that, I've done enough talking at you. I'd like to maybe talk with you. So I'll throw it back to the chair and you can take, take the meeting.
Thank you so much, Matt. At this time, I will open up to questions from the board.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Phil.
Okay, so that's good because you can't see me. Yeah, well, thank you very much for going back into this a little more depth. And I'm sorry to see it sort of flesh out from the presentation we had last time. But there was something, something hidden in one of the points you said. And I've been around in Howard County for a good long time now. But you were talking about that if people, if you get people involved in the process to affect change, that they want to see that somehow what they're saying is somehow incorporated. And I think that's always difficult. You know, like people will say, well, I'm going to keep my small town. You say, well, yeah, we can do that. Or you can say, well, you know, you're now at 80,000 people. You might want to think a little more about it. But I think there needs to be a level of honesty. And, you know, I think your approach allows for that. And so that was, that was just one that it's almost like going into the weeds. But what I hear over and over again, they came, they asked us what we wanted. We told them, it never happened. And there's, you know, perhaps some cynicism over the years about that kind of an approach. So it's kind of like, you know, honesty on your part as you're talking to the people about what is, what is possible and what probably isn't possible. And if it isn't possible, you know, be honest. you know, be honest about why, you know, you could never do it, it cost too much, or whatever those things are. You don't want to shut people down, but I think that that has always been a problem in the past. It makes it sound like anything you want, we can give you, and that's how people are hearing things. So I really like that you, you know, that you talked about that, will my involvement affect the change? And then the other thing, just overall, is I love the values that you're putting in, preserve, enhance, transform and strengthen. And I see them as values rather than, they're not catchphrases. And I could honestly see that as a measuring process as we keep going through this, you know, they should be up on the board in every meeting and really try to coalesce the thinking around, you know, there's, there's deep values that you're putting out there. So that's just my only comment, just going through this, reading your updated plan here, and also your questions for tonight. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Phil. Any other questions from the boards?
I have, I have a couple.
All right, Mr. Coleman?
So the, specifically, when you talked about silo chapters versus theme chapters, is that and, or is it an and or an or? Or maybe I don't understand the difference between what a silo and a theme is. I was wondering if you could clarify.
Sure. So an example sometimes is the best way to do it, right? So in a, in a more siloed chapter, you might have a chapter on housing, a chapter on transportation, a chapter on environment, a chapter on the economy, and they're all written and they may play together in terms of the edges, but it's more of a blinders-on kind of approach. It's a full story of that need within the county. And I kind of went off some of the conversations we had last time where from the themed approach, it might be like, what is county character, what is its authenticity? Or all things green? And if you do all things green, you have environmental in terms of stewardship, you have parks and recreation, you have transportation with greenways and things, and so you start to look at all those different pieces of the silos that come together to take on that challenge, rather than just hoping it's in all the, you have to go find it in all the different silo chapters. So that's kind of a quick response.
So, but wouldn't it be useful then to have both, where depending on what my interest is, if I specifically want to know what the Howard County Transportation Plan is, I could look at the transportation silo? And if I want to understand how that gets applied to these different themes, then there would be themes that would stitch the rest of that together?
Well, we personally have not done it that way, and, but I think we're maybe, part of where you're going with it is, while we have the theme chapters, we also have what we call our general framework chapter, which is where the land use map lives, all the supporting infrastructure maps live and all that kind of stuff. And I'm not going to always say always, but traditionally, the way that chapter gets written, you can start to see the pieces that you're looking for, that you're naming. But again, the chapters that go before that are more theme-based, acknowledging that it takes all the disciplines to solve that challenge. In terms of writing it, you could maybe go a little bit back and forth where some of the data synthesis and things maybe are in, are in a, organized in a way that you can kind of look at all things transportation at one time. But we have, again, our experience has just been, you either write the document kind of one way or the other so that there's, it's more streamlined, it's more predictable and to the point, and whichever way you go, rather than trying to mix the two too much.
Okay, I guess my mind just goes that to apply things to the themes, you would have to do more of an adoption or a stretch to find whatever particular scenario was in front of us, rather than having it laid out what, what the guidelines were. You know, that it'd be less likely that, that the themes could be comprehensive of for the 10 years that this plan is active that would, that would meet all of the needs.
Okay. Well, there's other ideas we could do as well, like for example, we could have icons next to recommendations depending on which kind of general topic they fall under, whether it's kind of transportation, environment or whatever. And then when you get to the implementing chapter, like the plan implementation matrix or something like that, you can organize them maybe by the icon that you want, or we have options in terms of kind of how we do it. But in terms of writing the story, we were leaning towards the theme just from what we had heard so far, but, you know, we can continue the discussion, obviously.
Well, and my background is software development and I'm really familiar with use cases, but also, I'm also used to having a requirements document or something else that ties those use cases to what is developed, and that's where my mindset immediately goes.
Okay. We all figured out something, so I know what you're thinking.
And the other part would be the infographic that Amy shared, I don't know if you want to address that or if you want to address it later.
We could go through it now, yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I liked it. One of the things that I was wondering is what it would look like if it was also for, if there was the same graphic or similar graphic for the executive branch and for the county council? Because when you went through it for us, everywhere there was the little infographic for input, that's a place where the public knows that they have a chance to talk to us and have input to the plan. And that goes why, and you have a whole other set of engagement throughout, throughout this plan, and I'm not putting that, but at each one of those places where we have an advisory role or something like that, that implies that we're going to have a public meeting. And I find that interesting and useful for people to be able to refer to of, of where their input goes into the process. And I'm assuming that there's parallel situations for the county council and then possibly the executive branch. And it would be a way to tie together, and if it wasn't part of this document, maybe it's an amendment or an appendix or something that just kind of lives along with it, but it would tie together concretely in a, in a reference for the public to know where their input is.
Matt, are you able to put that back up on the screen? Just so that, for the benefit of the folks in the audience. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if it can fit another thing on this particular document, but I hear what you're saying. So maybe, hmm.
What I was thinking, in my mind, it was like three or four pages, basically with the same graphic but with a different title and then...
Gotcha. Same format, but yeah, but they all connect to one another. Yeah, we have, I mean, we, we already have some of that in individual documents where we have actual flow charts that show where the public can provide input for each of the individual processes. So we could incorporate some of that.
Do we have the graphic to show?
I think Matt was trying to pull it up.
I need to be made presenter again. I, I lost that.
I'm working on it.
No problem, no problem.
You guys talk faster than I, my hands can move.
Like I recall the, you know, there's the 16-step flow chart, it's actually 32 steps because you start back over at the beginning. And where I spent an embarrassingly long time looking for that second set of flow charts before I realized what it was.
We have broken that down into three separate flow charts, so I'll have to send those to you. It's much more understandable now.
Right, but when I was looking at this, it's, is everywhere there's the comment bubble that we, we have the advisory recommendations role, that's, that's clearly, we're going to have a public meeting on that. And that alone, to me, seemed valuable out of this document. And I, and I do like the rest of it just to see where things fit in.
So maybe based on that, if we include this in the document, one of the things we could do is make that a little more explicit, that each of those, each of those key items provides a forum for public input.
And if, if you did that, I wouldn't want you to hide the fact that there's all the other engagement processes that are going on that you talked about tonight. But, but, but those are outside of us formally meeting, and, and this is, these, these represent formal public input and testimony. That, that was, that's all I had to say.
That's a good point.
I have a couple of questions, can you hear me?
Yes, Tudy.
So Matt, if you could, could we, Lisa, could you find that page number 13, I believe it is, that where they added reasons for development, I believe, were things that have to be in place for development? There you go. What drives growth in a community? I think this is really excellent, and I think this is very, very helpful, and I think a lot of times when, you know, plans are put forward, these background and very important foundations are not always recognized by folks who may or may not want a particular project to move forward, et cetera. So this is very, very important, and I, I see that it's done in a very gentlemanly fashion, but it is helpful information and I, I wonder if, how frequently this is put forward while you are having your community meetings, because this is really very important information, as well as how do you, in your meetings with community, how are you able to manage some of the expectations? I was listening, based on what Phil said too, that the community input is so important, but not always does it even take into account some of these things or other items that may make it not possible and so that we're not discouraging people. How do you handle those kinds of situations?
Sure. Great questions. I'll take them in kind of a different order, but I'll get to all of them. So for example, the graphic you see about what drives growth in a community, one thing we could do is, is literally have it mounted as a board, like a poster, and in every, every meeting we have, it's there, right? It's just like right at the sign-in table, we just remind everybody kind of all the things we're thinking about. So those kind of things, we can kind of try to keep it more front and center and do that. I think in terms of, and I'm going to leave in Phil some of your comments as well, when I mentioned in phase four, that's where things sometimes become controversial because we're starting to have to weigh things and look at how things happen. That's where we're acknowledging that, that there has to be consensus building, and the consensus building has to match with, with kind of some of these things that you see here, as well as the physical characteristics of the county, the economy, those kinds of things as well. So that's where we do try to provide some context. The one thing I think that's really interesting for this general plan update you're doing, and the reason I really like doing comprehensive plans as a, as a product that we provide, is the scenario planning. And because what was happening before scenario planning was, I had to tell somebody very early in the process why I didn't agree with them, and it didn't seem like I listened enough, it didn't seem like, it seemed like I wasn't willing to change my mind and I was just a salesman, right? I had my idea and I was going to defend it through the entire planning process. The scenario planning provides a great opportunity to have opposing opinions can actually be run through the different scenarios, and we actually get feedback and responses back that help us understand the trade-offs or the why one thing might be easier to do or one might, one might be harder to do but worth it. But we start to kind of engage with folks and listen to them a little longer and look for real tangible reasons why we have to go in one direction over the other. So I do think the scenario planning is going to be really important because I think, as was mentioned earlier, every time you all do a general plan update, it gets harder. The reason it gets harder is you're running out of land, you're starting to talk about density, you're looking at housing affordability, you're talking about schools and all that. And so every time you're doing another plan, you're becoming a bigger place or more urban or you're struggling with different opinions about certain issues, and they can't all coexist anymore because you don't have enough space to do. So I do think this is a plan where either through the public education funds that we have set aside, or the funds we have set aside for actually responding to comments and creating, whether it's white papers or leaflets or even videos or whatever it is, we're going to have to acknowledge that we do have to have a document you can adopt in the end, and if the document's just kind of got everybody's wanton opinion in there, but it doesn't really make sense, then it's not really a document with a lot of utility. So the planning process is going to have to weigh outcomes and alternatives and favor some of them for writing the document. We're just hoping that our process is genuine enough, either through the engagement or the scenario planning, that when people learn that we don't put exactly what they want in the plan, they know why. It's not just, no, we didn't, we didn't pay attention to that. So that's how we're hoping to be different.
Yeah, that's a good one. And I, and I have one other question, please. Are you, are you through the process, are you incorporating the development regulations assessment and that's, that from the Clarion report, are you, are sort of running those side by side? I mean, very useful information in there.
Yes, it was a great outreach effort as well as the product that was created, and so it'd be foolish not to, not to mine that for all we could. We will have to test some of those things because, you know, again, when we talk about COVID-19 or anything else, you know, everyone has a little bit, is rethinking some things. But we definitely have that in our starting, our starting blocks to test and look at, and we will bring those forward. We want to bring everything we can to the community and, and the officials to make better decisions, and that's, that's a big obvious piece of the Clarion report.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. I was just going to mention that, I mean, our hopes was that this general plan would be able to provide the groundwork for the future code update. So since we have all the recommendations from the Clarion report, we can, we're going to be using that to figure out how to lay the groundwork, especially as it pertains to the policy issues that came up during those discussions. Because that was a big piece of it, people were raising policy issues that we said those are really general plan issues and need to get addressed at the general plan level. So we know we need to tackle those now so that they can inform the future zoning.
Thanks, thanks, Lisa.
Tudy, any other questions? Any other questions from the board?
Looks like Kevin's waving.
Is he on mute?
Yeah, I can't hear him.
Okay, one second. Lisa, can we get Kevin? Kevin, you're important, hold on. I think we have a general mute on, Lisa. Please hold, Kevin. Kevin, I don't know if your question is short. That could be put in the chat box where I could read it.
I'm sorry, did I? What are you looking for?
Kevin's on mute and we, he's on a general mute.
Okay, hang on.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Kevin.
That's all right. That's all right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great, great, great. Uh, Matt, excellent presentation. Thank you so much. Um, just a couple of questions. On, uh, page 23, you were talking about the, uh, scenario process. I think that's going to be great with the virtual sandbox. I was wondering, when you said that all views would be, um, considered, uh, during the charrettes and other activities that you'll try to do virtually, um, when you have, uh, several conservative, progressive, uh, preservationist, uh, ideas all in the same chat room, uh, how do you take the voices in this, uh, virtual realm that we'll be in and make sure that everyone is heard and all ideas are able to be presented and get through, uh, during one of these meetings?
Yeah, it's a good point. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll be point blank honest. I'm hoping by the time we get to the charrette in the process, we're allowed to be more in-person. I'm hoping. It would, it would be ideal, because what we want to do is we don't want to have a conversation with one of those groups that you identified and then another, and they leave the event thinking, oh, they heard me and they're on the same page I am. It's better when we can have the cross-section of all of those folks coming to the same meeting and we can all struggle with how to apply these things or how to look at the balancing, uh, effect that goes with those. So the charrette is late enough in the process. I'm hoping that we can, um, be in-person, um, just to give you my honest opinion. Um, there is, uh, some case studies coming out on virtual charrettes and best practices. Um, there are some firms that are kind of testing those waters because they have to go now versus being able to wait, uh, and we're learning kind of how they're doing that. Um, I know in like certain meetings and stuff, or in certain software, like a Zoom, for example, you can have meeting rooms and stuff that you can do. What we really just want to get to a point and, or create a framework or structure where we're not talking over each other and we're actually having some two-way conversation. So as we let these things evolve on, and watching some of the folks who are ahead of us on what are the best practices, um, we always want to make sure that we're finding, just like the, what drives community growth, it's not just one, one thing. Um, so the, the groups that you had mentioned, in order to actually see change happen or, or a place saved, you have to consider all these different viewpoints that you brought up. And my goal is the more you bring them together and look for either win-wins or, um, how things can be done or alternatives that are out there to react to, uh, is my preferred approach. Um, I do worry, you know, my discussion earlier about silos and themes, if you get into siloed engagement, that's also very dangerous. Um, and so we try to, to have the whole cross-section as much as we can.
Good, good, good. Thank you. I know during our, uh, planning board meetings, it's fantastic when we have a room full of people and you have all of these diverse ideas and suggestions and comments. It truly helps us in our decision-making process, so hopefully all of those will get represented in the general planning, uh, process. I also wanted to ask, um, we had talked, uh, earlier about complete streets. Uh, is that considered a theme and how is that going to, uh, be recognized, uh, in this process when we start pulling these things together?
Correct. So the, you know, the complete streets was part of those 75, you know, stack of 75 plans, policies, ordinance and things that we were given to review. Um, obviously it'll be considered when we're thinking about what the general plan is, how it functions within the county. And, you know, complete streets are one of those things, again, where, uh, it does cross over chapters. So while you may think complete streets is more about a, uh, a transportation issue, the public spaces that it can create in the, what's called, you know, what they call the private realm, right? So between basically the back of curb and the front of the building, that's all, uh, not just transportation, that's placemaking and character building and authenticity. And so that's like one opportunity where complete streets might be a means to an end of also doing things besides transportation. So it will be on our mind because it is part of the placemaking and character is kind of a leading, um, charge for this version of the general plan. Um, and it'll look, be looked at in many different ways.
All right, great. Uh, remind me about the, uh, board game. I read that again. Uh, remind me what the board game would be?
So, uh, the board game is actually, it's an old-fashioned board game where you would, um, literally play a game of how much growth should come to the, uh, county. And then just like you were, or we were talking earlier about struggles and differing opinions, there might be things of like challenges that we try to achieve and people struggle with kind of how to do that and think about what they think the best, uh, course forward might be. Ideally, what happens is the way the game gets played and the pieces that get played and stuff get captured, and then they help influence the different scenarios that we study. Now, all that being said, I go back to the COVID-19 disclaimer that I, I mentioned and, you know, I, I'm nothing but honest. What terrible timing for me to ask 10 people to come together and play a game right now, right? Uh, whether it's the state simply in place or it's just, you know, good hygiene and practice, those kind of things. And so the board game is a, an old-fashioned board game, but there is an online version that's being developed in tandem with it. Now, uh, if, when and how the board game is played, we're still working through. Um, we know the online version will live no matter what. Uh, the question then with the online version is how much is too much, right? Because when do you lose people's patience when it's online versus being in a group game? Um, and so we'll determine how much the board game that you put on a table matches the online version. We're still working through all of that. But in an ideal world, uh, if we were able to get back to the quote-unquote "normal," uh, it would be a game that would be played in small groups. That game would actually introduce topics that almost require people to struggle a little bit, to look at other people's viewpoints. You would actually play pieces of looking at like where future growth would go, what type of growth, infrastructure, places to preserve, all those kinds of things get played so that we can mine that information for the scenario plan. That, that's in the ideal world, what we're, we'd love to do.
Great. I was going to say, uh, during this time when everyone's at home, what better time to, uh, play a game, right?
Yes. Well, and really, we're thinking through the little things, like if somebody checks out a game, how do we sanitize it so it can be used again, right? I mean, those are things we're having to think through now. It's like, well, are, do the pieces need to be disposable? So we actually put new pieces in every time or, that's the kind of stuff we're having to think through that we never thought we were going to have, you know, I can just tell you.
Um, I was going to ask you, on page 10 on the timeline, uh, there's, uh, mention of density sending, S-E-N-D-I-N-G. I wasn't sure what that was. Under 1990?
I need to, uh, give me one second. I was in the PowerPoint, so I need to get back there. So, hold on. You said page 10?
Page 10.
Yeah, okay.
Timeline under 1990 says, um, facilities, ordinance and density sending.
Consider the development option in the year last. Uh, Amy, I might phone a friend on this one. This is the other thing I'm trying.
That was, I believe, when the concept of density sending, um, arose, uh, which is now in the zoning regulations in the West where you can send density, um, in order to preserve land. So you could do cluster subdivisions and, um, in order to preserve land, and then there was also, um, the concept of sending density from, for instance, from the, our, the RC, Rural Conservation Zoning District, to the RR, um, you could send your density and then you could, uh, yeah, preserve, preserve more land in the RC.
Okay, okay.
But that, that, that whole concept came about in the 90s in that general plan.
Got it, got it. Uh, last one, page four.
Okay.
Uh, in the darkened rectangle, bottom left.
Yep.
Uh, it says, "With the state issued State-at-Home Order," is it stay-at-home or state?
Well, if I didn't put one typo, then that's how I know you read it. It should, it should be saying, man. You got, you got me.
No problem, no problem. All right, guys, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I have one additional question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Tudy.
Okay. Uh, Matt, uh, this may seem, um, petty and I don't, although I don't think it is because it's the name of the document, "Every Voice, One Vision." Can you explain the background of the "one vision" that you're going to get out of, uh, a Howard County?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so the "every voice" is kind of emphasizing more the approach, right? We're trying to get to as many folks as we can, and we're hoping during the planning process, whether it's through the scenario planning, the looking for shared wins, um, but try to create a shared vision, uh, for Howard County in the future. Because we don't want the document to be, um, uh, without a point or, or without a purpose. Uh, and so we're hoping that the "one vision" ends up being what comes out of the planning process is the best direction, uh, to point the compass for Howard County going, uh, for the next 10 years.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
On the list, I have Joel Hurwitz. Mr. Hurwitz, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you state your name and address?
Joel Hurwitz, 5681 Harpers Farm Road, Columbia. Uh, generally, my concerns deal with COVID-19. Um, I think Mr. Dooncaster's explanation helped me a lot, but I think putting that in writing so everybody could see that would be helpful. After you've also fixed the typo, I think that box is insufficient. Um, like to know the alternative scenarios and things and how you're going to deal with that. I think I began attending these type of meetings with the downtown charrette. I've been to Ellicott City, uh, Longreach, uh, and Clarion. I also feel that I, even though I'm now in my 50s, that I'm often the youngest in the room and the senior citizens that tend to come to these will be less likely to attend, so I'd like, uh, some, uh, detail about how to get their involvement, particularly some of them don't want to do things online. Um, my other problem was the where we are now problem. A few months ago, the Spending Affordability, uh, Board released their report to the county and the council, and it was outdated basically by the time they completed it, because that was when the pandemic began. So with the growth impact, the fiscal analysis, the market study, because as I also attended the market study, um, how much in background are you going to spend dealing with these things? Because 2019 data is out, out of date, 2020 is in flux and we really don't know where we are, so might be much to the end of this process when you have an idea to answer a lot of those questions. On top of that, the growth projections and the fiscal impact are also going to not only impact by the new economy, but by the changes to the, uh, school surcharge and the coordination tax and the transfer tax. So it's going to be hard to quantify if, in the short term and might not even in the long term, figure out which of those changed the development patterns and therefore the i-impact on the county, um, from the development. So I, I guess I'd like some guidelines of how you intend to deal with some of that without wasting time with outdated data. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurwitz.
Okay, next one is David Cookson. Mr. Cookson, will you be testifying?
No, I'm just listening. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Steve Breeden. Mr. Breeden, will you be testifying tonight? Okay, um, Benjamin Law. Mr. Law, will you be testifying? Mr. Law? I'm sorry. Law?
Uh, I want to be testifying.
Okay, thank you. Joan Lankos?
Yes, hello.
Will you be testifying?
Joan Lankos here? Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Give us your name and address.
Joan Lankos, 6110 Covington Road, Columbia 21044.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello? Hello, I haven't seen you guys for a while. Um, I wanted to comment, uh, in a couple of ways. Um, I've been doing my homework on this because I've been asked to, uh, be a member of the Planning Advisory Committee, and I wanted to tell you about my experiences with previous general plans. Of course, I was on the planning board, uh, during the 1990s and, and worked exclusively from the 1990 general plan at that time. One of the proudest things that I've ever done as a, as a community advocate was my work, um, in preparation of the 2000 general plan. At that time, we didn't have a whole lot of public meetings, but the planning board held five public meetings, one in each, um, council district around the county, and each one was attended by 30 or 40 people. Staff would give the, um, an overview of what they, what they were thinking that the plan was going to look like. They didn't have a consultant. They were doing it kind of in-house. And then, um, what you would see, like you see at every event, you have people like me and others that, you know, the regular cast of characters that, some of them had prepared comments, you know, I like this, I don't like this, blah, 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 blah. But the thing that I did that made me the most proud, because I really felt like I tapped into a, 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 a previously unused source, was that I noted who spoke, and as I said, it was only 30 or 40 people in the room. I asked every single other person in the room, what do you think? Do you have any opinions? And they'd all say, well, I wasn't going to speak, but, and some of the most insightful, thoughtful, different ideas and opinions came out of that one-on-one personal question that I asked people. And I really would like to encourage a consultant through all the various ways that, uh, that he's, he's talking about, um, gathering the community that, uh, and, and getting input that, that you really do that, because you guys know, as well as I know, that there are certain people who dominate all things and people just can't be bothered with talking as a result of that. Um, I only have about another minute, so I'm going to real quick go through a couple other things. Um, as I also have, was involved with, um, with, uh, developing Plan Howard, so I've been, you know, had, interested in a lot of general plans over time. I, um, I particularly important in the content is the fact that you're going to, to examine the, the, um, new town zoning. Very important that we need to come up with a, with a, with a plan for the future as opposed to what we've done for the past 50 years in the past. Um, particularly, there should be a, a significant review of the village center process, because, uh, the current legislation requires a process review, and this is an ideal way to do it, because the way it works now, I'm not real sure that's the right thing to do. I am out of time and I, um, think you guys are doing a great job with, uh, your virtual meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
Okay, next we have Khalid Avzal.
Hi, Susan Garber, 9100 Gorman Road, Laurel 20723. I had actually planned to go through a listing of the things that I liked and then those I had concerns with, but I was really intrigued by the planning board questions, particularly those dealing with engagement and honesty in engagement. So it makes me kind of wonder why this is even called a general plan when it actually is a growth plan, one that in the past has seemed more concerned with the number of sewer connections that we have than necessarily a true vision. And I noticed this slide that deals with what drives growth. The number one thing was market demand. And that really deals with future buyers. Sometimes long-term residents, you know, to the detriment of current residents, kind of like having, staying with the same cable company for years. They're, they're offered just wonderful things to new people, but when you've been a customer for a while, somehow what you have to say doesn't mean much. But I am pleased that the development regulation assessment was included in the process here and that there was also a review of former plans. I'm pleased that conditions at the time of the last plan were developed will be reviewed to determine revisions. I seem to recall the last plan was written at a time when 6% to 8% year-over-year income growth was anticipated. And we're certainly facing a very different reality now thanks to COVID. But even without COVID, the lack of available land and declining quality of life issues need to be addressed. I am most pleased with the character-based organizational framework and that it includes areas to preserve. For too long, Howard County's approach has seemed to be to maximize development and just the scraps will be preserved. Any planner knows that one must plan for natural areas as well as developments. Never before have we had such tools to identify these environmental and historic areas which should be preserved. I'm pleased that areas to enhance and to strengthen are also included and hope that they will help number the actual periods of transformation. I'm hoping there will be some specificity in the plan. I know we can't get too specific, but every development proposal currently brought forward claims to be consistent with the general plan when one readily argues the opposite. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, if that's all the testimony, do I hear a motion to go into work session?
Go into work session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the planning board is now in work session. Again, keeping in mind, we are making a recommendation for the council. Personally, I have been very happy with what was presented a few weeks ago and even the update now. And I think really what I like was really the fact that the public is gonna be involved. We're in unprecedented times right now, what that engagement looks like virtually, but just to really, Lisa, can we make sure everyone is muted except for the board? Just really making sure that the public is engaged. And I think really from all of that, that's really what I was impressed with. I know one of the questions that also came up was that general plan influence and planning role, should that be a part? I definitely feel that that should be, you know, a part of the general plan as well as, you know, what's driving the growth in the community. I really like that point about having those points at any meeting. So that the general public can see, you know, it's not just a silo effect. We're really looking at what, what's, what's going to be in the community.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I, I think there's a potential for maybe a new approach and also to come up with a new sort of plan that's not necessarily prescriptive, but really kind of looking at the areas in the county holistically. And that, that's, I mean, to me, that's, that's sort of big picture. What I like about what I'm seeing here, I'm still wondering who would be the decider at the end. I mean, this is a very creative process that Matt, you have laid out here. But at some time, the door has to close and somebody has to craft that coherent document. And I, I don't think you have to explain it all tonight, but I, I mean, I see going forward, you know, everybody can have ideas for the movie, but in the end, the producer and the director have to create a film. So, you know, I see that down the line as to be kind of difficult. And as you said, you cannot be all things to all people. There has to be something that maybe none of us thought of that came out of our collective voices. And I think maybe your, your, your approach might get to us to a different place than we've been in the past.
Well, I like, you know, when you're talking about that, I like the fact that, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be one scenario. They're gonna plug in a couple of scenarios. And I, won't that help whittling it down? Because it'll still have the engagement as they come to, like you were saying, that one, it's ultimately, ultimately have to come to one decision. But the fact that, that they're not gonna start off with one, do you like it or not? That there's gonna be several scenarios to bring it down to one, I think that would help.
It would help a lot.
And we had this once before. We tried this under Ori Aven.
I'm sorry?
Not, no one's muted.
Is it possible to mute everyone that's not on the board?
I, I did some, for some, but he's unmuted.
But I hear someone in the kitchen.
Yeah, I'm unmuting. Hang on. Apparently some are unmuted.
Okay, thank you so much. I was like, that's not Tudy.
No. No, did my, did my dishes earlier.
All right, we're still in work session. Tudy, go ahead.
So a few things. I wanted to, I think that areas of interest are probably, that we want to really look at are what I call revitalization areas. I believe that this particular document is really talking about redevelopment. And they use the term redevelopment. It's very important, I think, in, as our community gets older, that we do have areas for, that are ripe for revitalization. And I believe that's addressed here, although it's called redevelopment. And, and of course, the village centers are, do come to mind first and foremost. And that's really what keeps, keeps a community vibrant is when we do have those plans and the ability and perhaps maybe we are able to attract folks that are interested in investing in the revitalization of some of the older communities, which I think are just, I mean, I don't know the financial background of it, but it seems like it would be an awesome opportunity for certain, certain things to replace others that are older and maybe not utilized in the same way that they were intended to when they were originally built. I don't think the, planning and zoning is always gonna have to interface with the adequate public facilities. And I don't know, maybe that's something, because it's gonna always interface, maybe that's something that should be looked at. Maybe it's not working as well as a growth management process as it was intended when it was originally set up. So that might be something that could be looked at. I'm not real comfortable, although I don't feel that it has to be addressed here. I just like for the record that I like the, I just think that the "One Vision" is a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I mean, I just feel like you can look at that document and say, well, I'm gonna have to be pigeonholed into that "One Vision." After everybody gives their, after everybody gives their opinion, you know, you're still gonna have differences of opinion. And I think sometimes our best, our best ability is to give and take and not always be totally on the same page. But we can agree maybe to disagree. We're gonna have things we like and things we're not as comfortable with. That's just a small, a small issue there, but I just wanted to put that out there for the record.
Tudy, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. I didn't want to cut you off. You had a point. That's a great comment. Thank you. On that note, I was very happy to hear something else that is history-making, to hear three of our very avid and very vocal individuals that are in the room with us on a normal basis. Let's see, who was that? Mr. Hurwitz, Ms. Lankos and Ms. Garber, to hear them all with some very positive comments tonight on this particular plan. That is not always the case. And so not hearing a lot of criticism on this particular model makes me feel that we're on the right track. And so with that said, Mr. Hurwitz, I'm also going to commend him for mentioning a lot of the different community-based involvement that he had over the past. And I guess actually, all three were saying some of the same things, that they participated and participated and got deeply involved and then had a chance to actually put their name on something or to actually see the outcome. And I'm hoping that for this particular plan that Matt's put forward here, that we will be able to find enough individuals to want to come back and do something similar with this particular plan. And it truly sounds like the engagement factors that are listed here truly sound like and feel to me that they're going to reach out to a little of everyone. So again, I'm comfortable with sending this forward to the county council.
Thank you, Kenny. Ed?
No, I, I didn't have anything additional to add.
Okay. Any other comments from the board while we're in work session? If there's no other comments, do I hear a motion?
I, I move the, that the planning board recommends the county council approve the general plan guidelines.
My second, Phil.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? So recommended.